Here we go.
Call the workshop to order.
Yes, we will. Just state your name, address, and why you're here.
Absolutely. So my name is Cody Soche. I am a senior consultant with SSA Consultants. My address is 6618 Red Rose, Baton Rouge, Louisiana. And we completed the compensation study for the city, which kicked off earlier in the late springtime, and just recently sort of wrapped up activities in July. We presented the administration with a report of the findings for that project, including a list of recommendations for increasing specific positions' pay ranges. So, so sort of dive into the methodology of how we completed the study. We distributed a job analysis questionnaire to each of the individual employees, which was then reviewed by their supervisors and then turned back in over to us so we could have accurate information and we could do market valuations for each of the jobs. Whenever we review positions for market valuations, we look at their job duties, level of responsibility, supervision, barrier to entry, including education and experience, any essential knowledge, and required certifications. So with those things in mind, while we provided a market valuation for each of the jobs. When I say market valuation, basically what we're doing is providing a range, a minimum and a maximum, which is based on the market mean. We'll spread 20% below and 20% above, and we like to call those your buoys. And that's the area that you should be compensating individuals that hold that job. It is not based on titles. It is based on the core duties and responsibilities of the job. I would also like to state that as a part of compensation studies, it is really focused on the position itself, not the individual that holds the position. Compensation studies are in no way a performance review of anybody that that holds any jobs within the city. It is just the value of the job itself. And if you were to have to go hire another individual to take that role, this would be the pay range that you would expect to pay in, based on the market valuation. So what it does is it provides an excellent foundation for your compensation system by providing every single job in the city an appropriately market-valued range to which you can then build on off of. So as a part of that, we also reviewed other information, including benefits and whatnot, and then provided a crosswalk of current employees over into the market range. And if anybody was just below those buoys at all, what would be, you know, sort of cost estimates to bring them into that? So that's sort of what we did. I would be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding process or any individual. Yes, sir.
So what was your determination of the city of Bossier?
Well, it had been a long time since anyone had looked at those salaries and ranges in total. I think that moving forward, it would be a good idea to do this a little more regularly so you don't find yourself in a hole and sort of behind the eight ball a little bit. The, I think that there is a good organization of work. I think that the job duties were well-defined. Everything that was, you know, provided over to us, especially in the job analysis questionnaires, was well-thought-out. And I would like to also thank everybody for taking the time to do that right. Because it's like with anything, good data in, good data out. So I really am thankful for everybody that put in the effort and time to fill out those forms, get everything to us correctly so we could do our job and get good data back.
Well, I guess let me ask, let me ask a more specific question then, since we have most of them sitting in this room. What was your determination on our police department?
So what we did for the police and the fire, both of them, is we went and got regional-
Just police right now. Let's don't talk about fire.
Okay, sorry. Well, we used the same methodology for both groups. We went and we sat with the chief, and we determined a list of what we would call peer police departments or what would be our primary competitors for police officers whenever we're trying to recruit and things like that. We went out, we got all those salaries, and we compared them directly one-to-one with your police officer salaries, not including state supplemental pay. So it's an apples-to-apples comparison with each of these groups. And with that peer group, they are 7% behind the peer group. And I say, so that's just the hard data. That being said, you know, I am, I do understand how hard of a job it is to be a police officer and the compensation levels, you know, being low. And it's your, you know, sort of your prerogative to do what you will with that.
So when y'all take those comparisons, you're taking, you're taking every department across the state of Louisiana?
No, a direct, a direct peer group. So like your, like, regional peer group, basically. I could, I could get the exact list of the ones that we got for you, but I think it was like seven or so of them. Oh, yes. So we got Alexandria, the sheriff, Bossier Parish Sheriff, Caddo Sheriff, DeSoto Sheriff. We got Lafayette, Lake Charles, Monroe, Rapid Sheriff, and Shreveport PD.
State police weren't, state police was not in?
LSP was not included, but-
Not in that?
Not in this one.
And the fire department was pretty much the same?
Yeah, so theirs was a little bit of a different list.
Now, the fire department, when you do those, do you take into comparison for every certification that they have, there's a little bump in pay and everything like that?
Oh, so we did do incentive research. So we provided a list of like what the best practice, well, not best practices, but what are the most popular incentives, both for police and fire, and what traditional compensation would be attached for those incentives? And we provided those lists in here as well. So that can be tacked on top of them if you wanted to. But for the base salary comparison, we tried to keep it as apples-to-apples as possible. Now, I know that there are some fire departments that require certain certifications for certain ranks, where others do not, but that's a little hit or miss. Because I only bring that up because I'm very familiar with the St. George Fire Protection District. That is where I live. And they have a certain list of requirements, including like advanced EMT to go to the rank of lieutenant, which other departments do not require advanced EMT to go to the rank of lieutenant. There are some fire districts which operate ambulance services. There are others that do not operate ambulance services. So there's, it's just, it's a little, you know, a little variety across, but we try to keep it as close as possible.
And the fire department, are they the same 7%?
Not with the same peer group. No, they were not at the same 7% behind. They were relatively competitive on the lower end of the, of the ranges with, with the peer group.
Thank you.
Yes.
We're gonna see copies of that.
Questions about?
Just one thing I know. Appreciate your hard work and getting, getting things done. Your finding, what's the timeline of the validity of it? Like, now that we have the numbers, how long are they valid?
A few months. I'm just kidding. But really, whenever you're talking about implementation timeline, what you really want to try to do is get as much done within one year as possible that your budget can allow. Three years would be sort of the maximum, where like you're already starting to look at maybe reassessing where you're at. So one year is ideal implementation from, from the time of receipt of study. Three-year being a longer timeline, based on your budgetary constraints.
Okay, thanks.
And how often do you recommend salary studies should be done to make sure that we're not falling behind?
Every five years is probably a safe bet. That way, you don't have to move a huge needle because you're not far behind. You're keeping everybody in check. And it's more of just, you know, incremental increases instead of big, big leaps. It's a, it's a much more sustainable way to do it.
Have you found Bossier City lower than any other thing starting pay?
Some positions were, were pretty low. It, it just depends. You know, it's pretty position-specific. I think overall, across the board, it is a pretty big, big leap because they haven't been looked at in a long time. But, you know, I don't think that's, you know, done on purpose. I just think that that's, you know, the way it's been.
Could instituting policies like cost of living adjustments keep us from kind of falling behind the eight ball? So?
They can, but you need to be careful with cost of living adjustments. Because there are a lot of municipalities, parishes, cities that use cost of living as sort of a political tool. They don't tie it to an index directly. And they just sort of, you know, hold their thumb up in the air and say, oh, maybe 3% this year, or 2% this year, or if it's an election year, 6%. You know what I'm saying? And it's tough for, and that can really hurt you, actually, in your, in your pay scale system. Because it can cause you to go, you can inflate yourself a little too far. So if you are going to do a cost of living or institute an annual cost of living increase, I would highly recommend you tie it to an indices. That's pretty, you know, well-accepted. We like the social security administrations because it takes a year in total and then applies that as a cost of living. If you look at, you know, the CPI index, you're really looking at year-over-year for a singular month. So it really depends on which month you pick. So I think the BLS has one as well.
Thank you.
Now, you stay here. I'm not, I'm not coming up here to take your place. I would add that in the proposed charter, one of the changes that the charter commission recommended was that there be a salary study like this done at a minimum of every three years so that be able to address these type of issues preemptively.
That's correct. If you're doing these frequently, then your cost of, you'll stay, you know, with your market bound. And your, your ranges will increase as the market does, as long as you stay on top of it.
Right.
Other questions? Comments, concerns, methodology, or anything? Thank you all for having me up here. It's been a pleasure to work with everyone in the city. I want to give a special shout-out to everyone, you know, sitting over in this area that, that, that worked with us as a part of this project. Everyone has been wonderful, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
If, if it's okay, I just wanted to give some kind of an overview and some general things about the budget that I think will be helpful. And I do want to echo, Mr. Soche was incredibly helpful. He has gone back, we've gone back and forth multiple times on revisions, clarifications, things like that. So it was very eye-opening. Overall, I think this study showed 63% of our employees are below the market minimum. That was one of the primary focuses in the proposed budget for 2025 was to address the pay issues. So in our 2025 budget, the general fund revenue, there's an increase of 7% over the 2024 revised budget. And general fund expenses in the proposed budget are 10% higher than the 2024 revised budget. The individual departments, those budgets were largely, largely unchanged. Most of those changes came from things that were out of their control related to benefits, general insurance, those things. But the department heads I give tremendous credit to. They, they are masters at working with a lean budget, and they have done a great job. And they made our job much, much easier, and I appreciate them very much for that. The expense changes, the increases, were primarily due 62% in general insurance, 10% in group health benefits, a 5% increase in required retirement contributions, salary increases for non-civil service employees, and adjustments to police pay to create parity with the ranks for fire and one-time payments for firefighters. On the group benefits, we saw just under $1 million in our increase in the expenses for that, for the city's portion. And then the general liability insurance charges have a budgeted increase of $2,580,174. This is reflected in each department's budget. So you'll see that that looks like a significant increase. But again, that's something that's out of their control. And this includes premiums, claims, legal fees, and administrative fees. We have had very high increases in our insurance over the last several years. And that is, I mean, ultimately, it's not sustainable. And so one of the things that we intend to do is to go out for an RFP for our insurance next year for 2026 so that we can evaluate some different options and, and see what, what kind of response we can get to hopefully be a cost savings to the city. Salary increases for citywide, all departments, total $2,558,958. This includes the state mandated, the 2% increase for civil service, fire, and police. And it increases pay for non-fire and police, non-civil service employees. We use the data that Mr. Soche provided to get all of our employees up to the market minimum. And for those employees that are at the market minimum and everybody else, it would be an additional up to 5%. So everybody would get up to the minimum plus up to 5%. So that way, we're not just at the bare minimum. And then, like you asked earlier, we'd turn around and be behind the eight ball in January. And then for those employees that are at the minimum or above, it would be a 5% increase. So all of the employees would get an increase for police pay. And that total, for the non-civil service employees, that totals approximately $650,000. The adjustments to police pay, where they were creating parity between ranks, between fire and police. We really wanted to make sure that we focused on the officers that are on patrol, that are out on the streets, to ensure, you know, I mean, we feel, we want them to know what a great value they are to the city and how much we appreciate them. And so those raises, those increases amount to approximately 10%. And the total for police is $1,072,958. And we looked for fire because they are still considered competitive among the peers. Then it's a one-time payment. So we hope to be able to incorporate an annual increase for them, possibly in the 2026 budget. But this was a way to do this. So we looked at what the average increase would be for police and tried to match that with a one-time for the fire for 2025. So it'd be $4,000 for each firefighter.
And Ms. Nottingham, are they still getting their $5,000 on the 25th of this month?
Mm-hmm.
They still getting it?
Yes, sir. That's still, still on for the later this month. Yes.
The 25th, okay.
Yes. And I would note, for the one-time increase for the firefighters, that is split between general fund and EMS. So I think it's 27% is EMS. Is that right? And 73% is general fund.
You said 20, 27%?
It's from the EMS fund, and 73% is from the general fund. Our retirement increases, that net overall was 5%. It's $535,633. And there was an increase in police retirement. The, our portion was increased. The municipal retirement actually decreased, and firefighters remained unchanged. So between the increases and then the pay raises, our portion, that would be, like I said, about $535,000, an increase in that.
I mean, the, the portion that increased on the state retirement? Can they do that? How often can they increase that?
They do it annually.
Okay.
And it is done through their board, and we have zero control.
We have no control over that.
Their actuarial numbers.
Okay.
Yes. So it's, we're at their mercy. So I will say that statewide, it has created some issues, especially for smaller municipalities, where they have actually dissolved police departments and allowed the sheriff to handle that because they, they literally did not have the budget to pay for their officers. And sometimes it was maybe just a chief, but, but there was a lot of legislation related to that last year. Sales tax revenue is unchanged from 2020, the current 2024 revised budget. And the manning changes, the proposed 2025 budget has 708 positions, and that is the same as the 2024 revised budget. The current fund balance is $36,989,520. And we are projected to add an additional $7,432,764 at the end of 2024 to that. So that would bring that up to approximately $43 million. But I'll tell you, we will, we are proposing to use $2 million of fund balance to cover the increase in the general insurance with the caveat that we are going out for RFP to help bring those down. Because it is, like I said, it's not sustainable, but-
When you send out on RFP, are you sending out our general liability and our health? Are you, are you doing both?
No, with our health, we do compare that every year. We, we go out to market, you know, they get bids, proposals, quotes. I think, I hope I'm saying the right one. And last year, or this year currently, we switched to a, a different, we're not fully, fully funded. We are partially. And so we know that is a long-term play for the savings, but so far, it's working out really well, and we're on track with that. So we're using, the increase is so that we can continue to build our fund balance for the insurance fund. We, our goal is 2.5 million, and we should end the year at about a million. So we're doing really well with that.
And y'all probably get three quotes on the?
If they choose to offer one. We have had, we've been denied several times. You know, they don't want to provide a quote. They decline. So, but yes, we have. And overall, you know, we looked at even increasing the out-of-pocket max for employees to try to lower premiums. And it really was not enough, that there was not a big enough benefit to do that. So we left that alone. But it, like I said, hopefully in the next couple of years, this will, this will ultimately, will get that fund built up and, and that'll be a savings to our employees and overall to the city. I do want to note that this 2025 proposed budget is based on rolling property millages forward in 2025. That was not done this year, but that is an additional approximately $1.1 million. And three of those millages, three of the four, are dedicated to fire and police. And so in order for us to have a recurring revenue stream to sustain those increases, the, rolling the millages forward would, we feel like, be the best option to providing those increases for fire and police. We did make a change in the allocation of Parkway Capital Funds. And took, there's 2 million, 2 million of the money that is currently going to the Parkway Capital Fund will go to general fund for the pay increases. And so that's, we still will have 2.3 million going to the Parkway Capital Fund, and we have other funds. So we'll still have money going to the capital fund, but it would allow us to use that for the employee pay. All total, the proposed revenue or the proposed budgets for the capital accounts for 2025 total $22,980,000. And the other increase that we have proposed in the budget is a $12 increase in the sanitation fee. That would be per household, and it would go to cover the cost of curbside trash service and collection and the citywide beautification costs. So currently, the fee that we assess is divided, and a portion of it pays for the trash pickup, and a portion goes towards beautification, grass-cutting, street sweeping, things like that. But where we are right now, we are just covering the cost of the trash collection. And so we have to increase that in order to continue the beautification efforts. And that would also, the other change would be to mirror how the EMS fee is assessed, where like for apartment complexes, it would be done per unit instead of, a lot of them have a master meter. And you may have 300 apartments that have one master meter, so only $12 is paid for that entire complex. And so we would want that to be assessed for each unit. So it would be $12, and that would bring in additional revenue that is greatly needed in the Public Works Department for the sanitation and beautification.
Is it just units that are occupied, or the whole, every unit?
I would defer to Chief's. Every unit, yeah. So it's how the same as the EMS fee is assessed.
No, when you say every unit, say an apartment complex has 15 different units.
Each apartment.
You're talking to each apartment?
Like each, yeah.
All right.
You know, go back to sanitation. Did we break even or lose money this year? Because I know we was losing.
We're losing money. We're losing. But we, there was, if, there was a fund balance that has, and that's where, that's kind of kept it afloat. So if we-
Did it break even, or did it, we still losing?
We lost. We dipped into the fund balance for sanitation.
How much?
Okay. I will defer to Ms. Williams.
I've been going battle for about four or five years.
Yes, and that's, you know, in-
Yeah, we gotta go, is it $3 on, we gonna break even going up $3, or we gonna?
We're going up 12.
Oh, we're going up 12?
So we are going up 12 so that we, we looked at that, that would be some, you know, it would cover the collection and then allow that portion that's supposed to go to the beautification efforts to actually do that. But in the contract with, for trash collection, they, they do increase, our contract is based on a CPI increase. And we, we didn't create rates based on a CPI. They, they don't increase with that same frequency. And so that's created the deficit.
How many years do you think this $12 is going to take us till us?
That's what I was just about to ask.
We should go up 20.
Yeah, so the deficit was 4.3 million for this past year.
It was 4.3 million?
4.3 million.
It was what?
4.3 million. But you've got all your, your actuarial costs in there for retirement and other post-employment benefits. So that's- It's sanitation, water, sewer, all the proprietary funds.
So what about just sanitation?
I don't understand that.
Everybody else in there? So who else are we having in that budget y'all was talking about, besides just, just sanitation?
So you're saying the deficit was sanitation, water, and sewer?
Yes, those proprietary funds. But she's going to find out, just get the information on just sanitation.
Because I think we've been losing every year on that for-
Yes.
So are we going to have to go up on the cost of water and sewer, too?
Not at this time. We are- We are, there, we've been talking about, we need meter replacement and that is something that we have...
And we already appropriated the money for that, correct?
I thought we did.
No.
Didn't we? Ben came to us for, needing money for new meters?
We haven't done that, no.
You sure? Don't come again.
No, it's, it's, it will be.
We've had...
You'll know when you get it.
We've had discussions on it, but no sir.
Okay.
We haven't done anything formal because there has to be a mechanism to pay for that.
Okay.
And the only thing I was going to communicate was, the city is currently in the, the depths of a major rate study. So the, there's a, the state assigned a group to come up and do a rate study for the City of Bossier as part of the Water Sector Program Grant, that was a condition. Good firm, they are very, very, very thorough. I've got a whole list of questions I still need to answer. So when we get the results of that, I think that'll be the time that we sit down and have a informed discussion on, on our utility rates.
Is that, that is conditional, if there is a recommendation made to increase the rates and we do not do that, that does affect our ability to receive grant funds in the future.
Well, one other question about garbage pickup, how, how long is our current contract with them for right now?
Just negotiate, Dylan.
Not...
So we don't have a contract?
Yes, and we intend to, that will be evaluated in, did what'd he say, June? June of next year.
Well, I mean, I'm just wondering in that contract or the current contract that we have, are we charged, how are they charging us where they take the garbage to dump it? Because I know right now they're driving all the way to DeSota Parish, down I-49, almost to Mansfield to dump.
Going to Mansfield, aren't they?
Yeah.
My understanding, Councilman Havens, is that in the contract that was previously a five-year contract with, I think, a five-year renewal that was done years ago, was that they can raise rates based on the Consumer Price Index and they did that. Well, they did that in a year where the Consumer Price Index is very high because of inflation. And so I don't think that they, under the contract, can charge anymore based on what they're charged at the dump, but they are charged a lot.
Well, no, I'm talking about where they're taking it. I mean, they're driving, they're driving probably eighty miles round trip, taking garbage to go dump it.
And it takes several hours to get down there.
Yeah, are we paying, down I-49, I mean, are we being charged for them driving?
No, they could take it to Oklahoma or Washington State for all we care, but, but they...
Pay about a ton to dump it.
But they, they have to pay to dump it and so they increase the amount through the CPI, is my understanding.
And they have requested...
I'll let Mr. Rich explain it better.
They would like to discuss using the transfer station that we have to help alleviate some of that and keep them in the city, but that would definitely be something, I know there's a specific ordinance related to that, so the council would have to take action.
What, what kind of manpower would that take?
That would be leasing them the, the drop-off station.
Oh, okay, they would, we would lease it to them.
Yeah, and we would take our employees back over to the, you know, back into the department or to the recycle center, but they would, they would man that.
Would we charge them to dump it there or are they going to dump it and take it away?
They're going to dump it and take it away. They're going to put, they're going to put extra live-bottomed trailers in there and put a truck dedicated to taking garbage to the landfill and then the, the route trucks could dump there and then they could concentrate on their, their route daily instead of spending an hour and a half going to the dump and coming back.
That sounds like a great idea.
It would create some efficiency in that, in that part.
So what's the holdup on kind of moving forward with that?
There's a specific ordinance related to the transfer station and I, I don't know the history behind it, but I, I know that there was good reason for it, so it would, that's just, that would require rescinding that and then possibly just getting an agreement.
And if I may, I think one of the, one of the concerns that was raised was if we allow that, number one, how much are they going to pay to use it and they, they didn't offer very much.
Right.
And then number two, Live Oak services a lot of areas other than Bossier City and will they be bringing trash from Horton or Mendon or wherever into the heart of Bossier City and then using our transfer station? Those are the kind of things that the council and administration would need to get worked out.
Right.
So for the little bit that I had heard of the discussion, the amount that they were offering was not...
Right.
So, so do I understand that we really don't have an active contract right now? We're just go, working off an older one?
We, we have an active contract, it just recon, it, it renews by what they call reconduction. We don't have a, a new proposed current contract.
Gotcha.
The other thing about leasing that transfer station is if you look at, it, it would have to be done at fair market value, it would require an appraisal and a lease rate and what's been offered, my understanding what's been offered has not approached fair market value. And then, so you always get into that question of, you know, i- if you lease it below fair market, fair market value, are you looking at some type of unconstitutional donation or discount or things of that nature?
Gotcha. Well, if we can, if we can work through it, that sounds like a, a big win.
Back to the sanitation revenue, if we take the entire fee from the water bill and apply it just to the sanitation department, there's an excess of five hundred thousand, which doesn't even touch the beautification expenses. So that's why they're so in the hole on that one.
What, what beautification expenses are we talking about?
We have street sweeping, grass cutting, herbicide, mosquito, animal services.
Every time you need, Wade, that's beautification.
Wade, you do a good job, buddy.
Ditch cleaning.
I'm on my twenty-eight dumpster.
Can we, can we take some of the, can we cut some of the Sportran funding and put that towards, I mean, nobody wants to answer that, I know, but...
We did not adjust Sportran funding for twenty twenty-five, it, it has remained the same, I will say that.
Still nine, is it nine hundred thousand?
Anything you want, Wade, we'd do.
Don't tell me that.
It's not a hint on the, on your cheat sheet, will each council member get a copy of that?
Of my cheat sheet?
She gave us, yeah, you gave us quite a bit of information.
Yes.
And secondarily, did, did the administration speak to the police regarding your proposal?
I have talked with Chief Haugen about it. What we, the numbers we put in, we, are in no way final, we have not worked out all of the final details, but we have definitely been in communication and would defer to Chief Haugen on the best practice to implement that within his department.
His feedback was what?
That it was...
What was the question?
Your feedback on our proposal for the increases.
Got to pay attention.
It was good?
Yeah, I mean, all in all, it, it was good, it was well-received with us. Ultimately, all we're trying to do is just match other numbers, we're not trying to get crazy, we're not, you know, doing anything outside of what was recommended.
And the fire department?
Less pleased, I'll be honest, but I will, I will allow Chiefs to go and to come and speak. Obviously, everyone would like a, a permanent increase and that is our goal, but we, we have a lot of ground to make up, just, you know, that salary study showed us where we're short and fire department is not, they are not struggling to recruit at this time, I'm not saying that will not happen, but we are struggling in some of our other departments and wanted to get those critical areas addressed and like I said, hopefully in the twenty twenty-six budget, be able to implement a permanent increase for fire.
Better talk good, Chief.
Oh, here he comes.
Battle of the badges.
It is. Of course, we want parity amongst fire and police and a one-time payment and, I mean, never look at gift horse in the mouth, but when you have a raise, that actually goes on their retirement where one time doesn't. But we do see issues in hiring. When I, two thousand eleven first got here, we had over two hundred applicants, this last time we had forty. So we're down, we just don't have the issue that they have, but this, it's not, it's not that we don't have an issue, we don't have near the applicants we used to have. And we lose, we lose them to Cato, smaller fire departments. We compared fire departments that were of our size, we didn't compare the smaller ones, the Cato One, Cato Two, the little departments that they, we do lose people to, that they do pay more. And so I would also like to mention, from what I understand, like the general fund surplus, you can do like a quid pro quo, not a bonus, but in lieu of some of the, the things I've talked about in the past, if we do something that gives back to the city, like if we make our firefighters, they pass the physical assessment that we do every year, they, they're in better shape, your health insurance goes down, and I would like to do something as to one-time payment for something like that because the city gets something in return when our firefighters are healthier and not using health insurance as much. And then also, it would be a big benefit if we did something for somebody that didn't call in sick the first half of the year or the second half of the year, we're in overtime all the time now. And we're in overtime where we have an academy going on, so we got twelve people out there, but we're still twelve short on the line, so we don't have a choice but to use the overtime.
And I will say, I commend both chiefs, they have, they, they fight for their officers and they're a wealth of knowledge and have given some very good and creative ideas and they, they both are willing to think outside of the box to better their departments and that really has made it much easier.
How many, how many people are each department down right now?
I guess is six or eight for us.
How many?
Six or eight.
Six or eight?
Yes, I don't know exactly. Twenty-one, no applications.
Twenty-one.
Now, like, you know, you use the terminology, think outside the box and, you know, going forward, we've talked about how to maintain retention and did the administration look at, if we, if we look at the millage of our city and we're going to roll it forward for the first time next year, twenty twenty-five, but what if we were to take the millage and designate a portion of the revenue line item to law enforcement?
Three of them are specifically for fire and police.
But going forward, that we can...
Require, I think it would require a vote of the people to...
That's, that's what I'm getting to, you know, that, that's thinking outside the box. I think it's going to come down to in the future for safety and protection and, and parity for employees, you're going to have to start thinking like that. We're not going to get there any other way. I mean, we, we just, I don't think we can. And I don't like taxes, nobody like taxes, but I think in order to maintain our equality of living in Bossier, we may have to start thinking about that in the future.
Well, and that was part of the reason for the change in allocation of the capital funds. It is, it is great and, and I commend, you know, all the leaders of the past that have built, you know, they, they've had that foresight to set that money aside for those capital projects, but we'll get to a point where we will not have employees to maintain those capital projects if we don't pay them. And so while we still do have, you know, funds going to capital, to those capital accounts, we do feel that they would be better served for our employees at this point.
Yeah, and I, and I have a grave concern about not having police boots on the ground. We, we've talked about that in our committee and again, that's, that's paramount to everybody concerned.
Chief Haugen made, there was a change, it's in the works right now, I think, that I, again, commend him for, for being able to hire eighteen-year-olds in the jail.
Okay.
And that's, you know, that's a big difference between fire and police, police have to be twenty-one, fire can come on at eighteen.
Did that pass?
It's at the early stages of it, it will finally pass on October thirtieth. It only had to go to a local board, but we did have to post it with the state, so it's in that posting timeframe right now, the local board will bring it up on October the thirtieth at their next meeting.
Because if, if it's correct, I heard a rumor, you have nine people working in the jail for all three shifts?
That's correct.
Three on each shift?
Yes, sir.
How do those guys take a day off?
They don't.
I mean, Chief, how many do you need in jail?
Total staff is twenty.
Twenty just in the jail?
We're, we're currently today at ten, but we just had a guy at the end of last week turn in his resignation, he agreed to stay with us for two weeks. He's going to the State Police Academy, you can't fault him for that, I mean, he's trying to better himself and his family. But when he leaves, that will put us down at that nine mark, that's eleven, that's gone, it takes twenty. These guys, you see them back here, that's the reason they're here. I mean, we are killing overtime, we are short of forcing it, we hadn't had to force it yet, but it's probably coming. So not only are they working an eight-hour day on the street, having to deal with their own overtime on patrol because they're shorthanded, then they're going and working four to six hours in the jail just to keep it afloat. And this is every day, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. It's not today or tomorrow's problem, it's for the foreseeable future and I don't know what the fix is, I really don't.
You know, I'm, I'm not trying to cause any despair between the fire and the police, everybody does an excellent job in keeping the citizens of Bossier safe, but you know, I, I know the three of us had a little funny text message going the other night, how, how many, from two o'clock to ten o'clock that one day, how many calls of service did the police, it was over twelve hundred calls?
Yes, sir.
In an eight-hour period that the police...
And I keep in mind, one call if three officers go, that, that's three accounts.
Yeah.
So you could probably break that number down into, I would say a fair number would be three to four hundred.
So if that be the case, one call for us, we could have twelve people on it.
Yeah.
If it's a structured fire, we're going to have twenty people on it, so it, it's apples and oranges, we're calling just a call, no matter how many people we send, that's one call. So when I sent you the number, that is one call, I didn't tell you how many people...
But we're adding two on your end, we're adding more nursing homes, we're adding more assisted livings, we're adding all that stuff in the city limits.
I can tell you right now, from two thousand eleven, when I first got chief, we made about eighty-two hundred calls a year, somewhere around, it was eight thousand something, we'll be north of fifteen thousand. And you've added one ambulance, zero stations. And the good thing about it, when you see the ambulance going down the road, they're actually giving, generating revenue. So that's, that's a proprietary fund, the EMS side of it, so every time you see them running hot, but they're like bumblebees around the city. And if you pay attention when you look at your salary study, and I think you can verify, the difference is wasn't the, the hiring number, we were pretty comparable, but it was the, as you get in ranks, your retention number was way off in firefighter.
Yeah.
Compared to the people he looked at, there were some where our captains weren't even near, they were making what some assistant chiefs were making as a captain. And so the, there's disparity amongst all of the study when you look at it, it is, our hiring number was pretty okay, we still lose them to the smaller departments and they go there, make more money, make less runs. They come here, they're liable to be up all night, that's a very common thing and have training the next day because they have to meet the PIL rating, this required training for you to keep your Class One Fire Department and your property taxes down. So they don't...
This is the real battle of the badges, right here.
So I got a few public safety questions. Did we, did we analyze the starting pay for either fire and police? Because while raises are great, if we can't recruit, we're starting off on the wrong foot. So have we looked at raising the starting pay to meet what our peers, what they pay starting out?
Just to be fair, right across the river, right off the get-go, fire or police, you get a ten thousand dollar sign-on bonus from the get-go, so that makes it hard. We have a handshake deal, Chief Reese and I, and we've had it with the other ones, that if you come in, I don't hire your people, you don't hire mine. And it has held up, but it's just an agreement. Once we cross those lines, one of us, then it's going to be whoever pays more, they're going to jump ship and go to each other's department, but that's hard to compete with right there in itself. You come in there with firefighter one, firefighter two, and they're going to give you ten thousand dollar signing bonus, post-certified for them, we don't offer anything like that. We don't offer anything like that to them, so we're not getting those people that they're getting from other departments, so we lose out.
You did recommend some incentives, though, right?
I did, and I, and I will say, we looked at starting pay, we did not adjust it for the twenty twenty-five budget, we left it alone.
Cause we both agree.
For the ultimate goal that we stay equal with the fire department. Now, throughout the ranks, we're not equal, that's where the adjustments that you see in our budget came from, is strictly just trying to get the, us in parity with them.
And that is true, and the thing is, they don't have laws like we have. There's a law that says a driver has to make ten percent more starting pay than a firefighter, twenty-five percent for a captain. Y'all know, we've dealt with this in the past, forty percent district chief, fifty percent assistant chief, you don't have a choice. So they are off in their upper ranks, I saw the paper today, I, I can't quote you the numbers, I just took a glance at it, but it was true, I think sergeant and above, but their corporal made fifty more dollars than our driver, and so, and they're starting firefighters, what, thirty, I mean, policeman's thirty dollars or something, a month more, something. But it's close, and that's what's important, that I'll always stand up here and tell you, there needs to be parity amongst us. One going a starting pay way higher than the other one, y'all been here, that have been here while, y'all saw what happened. It'll either be a room full of cops or a room full of firemen next, the next week, and it's gonna happen if that happens.
Chief, let me ask you something, you said a ten thousand dollar starting, uh, on the street board, is it a, um, so many years you gotta stay there for that?
They give them half upfront, if I understand the right, and then after they've been here.
I'm, I'm, it's on a contract, it's, I wanna say it's three, three years total.
Three years? I thought three years.
Is it, I can only speak to the fire side, and I'm assuming it's a lot, same with the police, if they come post-certified, they can go through a mini academy and go to work, they don't have to go through a full academy. They come to me with EMT basic, firefighter one, two, hazmat awareness and ops, we can do something that we've never done before and get them on the street. Longer where it takes us right now, twenty-two weeks, I think, in the academy to get them to where they can ride on the fire line. Can't ride a fire truck if you're not firefighter one, at least, and we get them firefighter one, firefighter two, awareness ops.
Yeah, my, my other question I had, and I don't know if Amanda, you can answer this, or Ms. Williamson. The, uh, Mr. Darby brought up the millage, can we roll the millage forward next year since we just rolled it back?
We did verify that we can do that, so we.
Okay, so that option is still on the table?
It is, for twenty twenty-five, correct, and, and like I said, that is part of, you know, that's what the revenue, the budget's based on, uh, the assumption of doing that. I know it's not popular, but I do believe that with those, with three of the four millages dedicated to fire and police, um.
So, so is that assumption based only on the three fire and police millages?
It's rolling all four of them forward, because we do have municipal employees, um, we have the increases for them as well, but, um, that's, you know, um, everybody wants public safety, but they also want their trash picked up, and they also want, uh, their, you know, their toilets to flush and water, I mean, all of that, so, um, we have, we have a lot of heroes in our, in our city.
Okay.
How long you think that, if we use the millages, how, how many years you think that will last for us?
So it's approximately one point one million, so it would, we would get the one point one million, um, and then the, there would be another reassessment in, uh, four years, and so there's a potential then for an adjustment, either to roll them back or, um, to roll forward based on the new reassessment. But it would definitely, um, be very helpful in, in sustaining these, uh, increases that are very much needed.
What happens if, uh, what, what happens if we pass this budget and a roll forward doesn't happen?
Well, um, that would, that would be problematic, I mean, that's why, you know, like I said, I wanna be upfront to say that it is, um.
What was your question?
It is based on that, but.
If we pass the budget and a roll forward doesn't happen?
Yeah.
I mean, that, we basically would be walking into a million-dollar deficit.
I mean, yeah, it would, you know, y'all, the council votes on those every year, and so I, I would assume if you adopt the budget, you know, with these increases, that it would be with the intentions of rolling it forward, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see how a council member sitting on this panel would not do that when those sitting out there would be impacted directly, uh, in a positive way, and so I don't.
Yeah, I just, I was just, I was just thinking, you know.
I can't fathom that, but.
Same area, I, I agree, I, I appreciate it.
You gotta come in with, with dark shades and not see nobody out there, but this will be.
It's still somewhat conservative too, if you look at twenty twenty-three actual, it was sixteen point two, so you're going from sixteen point two to seventeen.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we, we.
So we didn't go.
The full amount, yeah.
Yeah.
We did try to do everything, very conservative.
Try to be, uh, conservative on the estimate.
All right, thank you.
Angela, reserve a day, cause you know, when Mr. Montgomery gets back, he, we're gonna come talk to you, and I don't know when he's coming back.
Okay, yes, sir.
Are, are, are we taking into account the, um, the inventory tax that the governor is doing away with?
Well.
Over, that's over a million dollars?
We have not at this point, um, that, nothing has been done, and I would say we'll cross that bridge when we get, I mean, I, I.
I mean, it's just something we need to think about, because I mean, it, it's coming.
Right, it is, I'm, yes, and that. That is, um, definitely one that we will, I don't know when that will be effect, when it will go into effect, so, but we are watching all of that closely.
Okay, um, is anybody else have anything?
I'm, I'm waiting for our cheat sheet.
Yes, I will send that to you.
Are we going through every department, or we, we just doing an overview?
No, I mean, she's, she's given.
Well, that's. I, I tried, you know, like I said, their, their budgets did not change.
It's, it's, yeah, it's flat.
Um, yeah, it was all things that were.
The only, the only thing that I, that, I mean, that I, that I think we really need to take a long, hard look at would be Mr. Rich's in Public Works, because we're, we're getting to a point, and Wade knows, he gets sick of hearing from me, Chris, Bubba Don, Vi, uh, he gets sick of hearing from all of us, that I think if we had one budget that we need to look at increasing is in Public Works, where we start outsourcing some of the duties that Mr. Rich and his people are having to deal with on a day, and the biggest one is mowing. That is our biggest one that we call Wade about all the time is mowing, that I think we need to look at that on outsourcing some of that.
Yes.
Um, the mowing, one being the R three A T parkway, and maybe some of the medians and stuff like that in subdivisions that they mow. So I think that we really need to take a look at that.
And I think that will, like, that increase in that fee will help towards those efforts.
Yeah.
Wade, the driveways look good over there at the BMW, appreciate that.
And Council, can you leave?
Anybody else got anything?
Leave your books, um.
Leave the books?
Ms. Williamson asked that we leave them, and she'll update them.
Thank you everybody for coming, thank you Amanda. Come to the mic, I can't, we can't hear you.
It's just a workshop.
Will compensation study be released to the public, and if so, when?
Now a public record, it will be released, we'll figure out a way to re-release it without having to file a formal public record request.
Okay, and any idea, Williams, please?
It's technically still draft, and so I will give it to Mr. Soche to stamp it the final, to make sure all of the changes. Okay. Hey, Mr. Williams, do you wanna adjourn the meeting?
Street board is not, it's gonna be up to.
Adjourn the workshop, thank you.